Just hit it.
Tell me when.
Ready?
Okay, this is the Enfield Planning Board. It is April 12th, 2023. We are meeting in the DPW conference room and on the Teams web platform. Okay, so I'm calling the meeting to order at 6:30 and our members present in person, starting from my left with Eric Russell.
Eric Russell.
Dan Kylie.
David Frack.
Bill Vermeer.
Brad Rich.
Staff member, oh.
Jim Bond.
Staff members.
Bob Taylor.
Whitney Banker, also an alternate.
And on Zoom, we have.
Linda Jones.
All right. Well, here's Kurt Goddard. Hi Kurt. And our guest is, yes, plural. We have Seeley O'Fiero and Phil Neely. Public comment. Seeley, anything you want to talk about that is not on the agenda?
Thank you.
Okay. Select Board Report. Eric, can you fill us in?
Sure. If there's anything that people are interested in, just ask. So we've reorganized as five of us now. I'm glad to be back at the Planning Board and excited for the next year. With five of us, that's allowing us to have representation on more boards, which is, which I think will be a good thing. As far as, it hasn't been a whole lot of action in terms of new business. One thing we've taken on for this year, it'll take a long time, is just review all of the town policies to take. So that's something that sort of every, every so often will be a few town policies we go through because they range from so old as to not even be applicable anymore, whatever they were applying to has changed to just needing updating. And we'll see, see where that goes. Relevant to this group, the Johnson Drive Committee is wrapping up the public sessions scheduled. And encourage everybody to go there. The Whitney Hall Project, they put out requests for an RFQ and they got two responses back, so they're working through those and, and working on that project. The Lakeside Park Parking Plan was, the Inside the Park Parking Plan was approved at the last meeting, so that'll, that's gonna happen. That's the one that everybody, I don't think any changes were made from two years ago when it came before this board. And this is just sort of the official, they got all the Ts crossed and Is dotted with the state and the railroad and everything.
Are they gonna pave it?
Most of it's going to be, most of the parking, the parking area is going to be paved, yes. And there's gonna be like a little loop, you know, a turnaround at one end, so you drive in, you can turn around, it'll be parking against the rail trail. So yes, and it'll all be sloped to the rail trail with a basin there, so that the runoff doesn't go to the lake and all that. Anything else?
No. Okay. Next, we have a new agenda item, which will be regular from now on, and that is a report from Rob, our Land Use Administrator. The idea on implementing this is just to get everybody up to speed and current with what's going on in town. And I think by having a little more insight into what Rob is doing, we will have more information with which to do our jobs here on the Planning Board. So what's happening, Rob?
Well, it's getting busy. The second winter subsided. And now that we're into some nice weather, people are starting to think about projects and certainly building permit volume has increased. Liam, who's, we've sort of merged, he and I are now in one department. Basically, we haven't come up with a good name for it yet. I think it's probably Land Use and Development, something like that, with Liam sort of working with me, not necessarily for me, although I technically am his supervisor. But so things are starting to pick up in that area. Number one on my list, I wanted to tell you about Laramie Farms. That's the development that we talked about. They were here maybe six months ago, up on the top of Drybridge Hill, as a matter of fact, not too far from where Linda's place is. If you remember, they had come in with a conceptual and they'd shown us about 150 unit multifamily concept with one and two bedroom apartments proposed. They sort of waited in the wings and saw what happened with our town meeting and the results of our town meeting, we've increased the density allowed. So they have a new proposal that they came in to see us last week, which is 300 plus units. They did change up a little bit of their design. It would be, at least at this point, they showed us possibly some townhomes on one end of the development, but not a lot, you know, something in the vicinity of 12 to 20 townhomes. But still mostly what you guys have seen already, which are the big buildings with balconies, parking underneath, one and two bedroom apartments on maybe three stories above the parking area. We had a meeting last week with New Hampshire DOT officials. That was my recommendation. I facilitated that meeting. I think that's the big wild card for them at this point is what will the, what will the state require? As you guys know from experience with Jakes and others, that, that, that many people, especially if they push it to 300 units, it could be a lot of people, a lot of trips.
And all that.
As you know, that access is, is a challenge. If you've driven by, you look up that little, right now, it's just a little road up to our water tower.
Right.
So started a good conversation with representatives from DOT District Two Office, then the engineers and others with them. They came with their engineer and it was a really good productive dialogue. They, they're gonna basically start with pulling up driveway permit, which is where that begins. And then they really start in with DOT, does a really comprehensive review. They're gonna have to have traffic data and the engineers and all that stuff. So just getting the ball rolling on that. We have had a meeting, I don't know, two or three months ago, we had a meeting with Fire Chief and the Police Chief that we facilitated. Town Manager and I have met with them, Public Works. So the, you know, the conversation is really ongoing with them. It's kind of exciting. I mean, it's daunting at the same time. I think you guys probably would agree that that could be a very transformative project if it, if it gains momentum. We still have a little bit, especially my brother here, because he's, he's approved project on that site, I think twice before. It was proposed originally as a multi-lawt subdivision, and then it was multifamily, and then it sort of went away. And, but these guys are the real deal. They're, they both have tons of experience and have developed a lot of other properties, especially in New Hampshire, Southern New Hampshire, Plastow and places like that. I continue to emphasize during the conversations what you guys had said, preference to get pedestrians down to Maple Street on that land. They have frontage down on Maple Street. A big wild card for us on the town level and Town Manager and Select Board and I'll be working on Jim. We have sewer capacity with Lebanon. We need more water. They're gonna put 300 plus units in. We need more water. We, we've already drilled a new well at the Marsh Field that's hopefully coming online and use some more analysis and some more testing and so forth. And there's possible another well to be drilled there. You guys know, well drilling is kind of a crapshoot, so we'll continue to play that game. But we've, we've sort of emphasized to the developers, hey, we're gonna have to work in partnership there. It's, you know, we're right sized for what we have now, but if we add a whole bunch of new users, could be 1,000 people in that development if it's 300 units. We're gonna need more water. And they would actually maybe even be part of the solution with locating a well on their property up at the top. As you guys know, the water tower would actually be below the development. So they're gonna have to come up with some serious solutions on their own for how to feed water to their, to their site. But obviously, there's a need for the housing and so it's, you know, we're continuing to push forward and, and they have sort of identified a list of variances and special exceptions that they're probably gonna likely need. And now that we've made it through town meeting and the zoning ordinance has been amended, they're likely to come in in the next month or two with applications for the zoning board to start in on that. That's basically, there's nothing to hold that back from starting that process.
Do they have to come back to us first before they go to the ZVA?
Nope.
No.
So obviously, you know, it's a two-pronged thing. We'll, we'll do, we'll do, we'll do, we'll do, you guys here.
Yeah.
But they can start in with, with the, with the zoning board as well. They need to sort of firm up what they want to do. There's still some ambiguity on what their plans are. But you know, for the most part, it's still the stuff that they've shown to the Fire Chief and Police Chief and others and, and you guys for, for that matter. So that, I mean, that's gonna be, that's gonna be a big deal, as you, as you might imagine. It's a, if you take 300 apartments, you put a couple of people, maybe two and a half people in each one, that's, that's a lot of people.
Yeah. And have a, a name that they're calling it because?
Laramie Farms.
That's what they're using for, for them, okay.
Yep.
And are they doing any consideration of, on using Maple Street as access? Or are they solely focused on?
So we have discussed, and I think it makes a lot of sense, that there will be an access road down to Maple Street. But it's likely to be a gated access with Fire Department and Police Chief having the keys, you know, so then if we need to get up there, you know, you don't want to have an accident on their regular driveway, totally eliminate our access up to that facility.
Yeah.
So I think that's kind of, you know, that's in the works to kind of have a, a sort of an alternate emergency access. I've, I've been encouraging them, I think you guys did too, when you saw them, that that would be a great pedestrian, that they could plow. We'd love to get the pedestrians down to Maple Street, keep them off Route Four.
Yeah.
And I think from, you know, from the village standpoint, it could be transformative to have lots of people in the village using our services and would probably help, you know, other businesses pop up to support that.
Paved access, gated at the end, you put a pedestrian gate, puts a bike, bike, quite enough for a bike to go through.
And you know, that, that's where they plan to connect up to the sewer system. And so, you know, interestingly, they do, you could tell in the back of their mind, as you talk to them, that they have some interest in further projects on Maple Street. But it's interesting, you know, I had to remind them, well, if you're gonna use all of your acreage for the project that you've got up top there, you're sort of extinguishing your abilities to do anything on Maple Street. And they're like, oh yeah, that's right. So they've got a little bit of that and, and so that's, that's a big one. And Town Manager's very intimately involved with me on that. We've had some really great conversations and we continue. And there's more, more interesting things coming up on my list. Second on my thing was the response to the ADU changes that you guys helped facilitate at the town meeting. There's, continues to be significant interest there. I'm still taking a lot of calls. I think there's excitement. There's definitely some buzz brewing. I did reach out through the help of Casey Cantlin, Realtor for Vanessa Stone. And I'm now on the schedule for the Upper Valley Board of Realtors to make a presentation to the full board in June at their regular meeting about what we've done. And they've actually kind of expanded. I won't just be talking about ADUs. I'd probably talk about the other things that we've done here in town with regard to the zoning changes and amendments. But it'll be good to be in front of them because, again, a lot of them, when you talk to them, you're like, hey, do you know this? What? And it piques their interest. They're like, oh, wow, that's amazing. So it continues to be a challenge. I think Tim, when the last meeting, challenge for us to sort of get the word out that this is now a possibility. There's a lot of explaining to do for people. They, they're, some of them are confused as to what, you know, what is it, what is impossible. I think the state's similar proposal has now been tabled. I looked it up today. And that is not likely to pass this session. So, and of course, the other one, was it HB44? That one, that one was, that was inexpedient to legislate. So, you know, we still have the opportunity, I think, to make, make some hay with it, you know, to get some publicity and, you know, sort of come across as being part of the solution for the housing crisis. I know Town Manager has been at, he, he meets with regional managers, city and town managers, so Sean Malaland and Alex from Hanover. And, and he brought that up and everybody's, what? You know, they were kind of shocked. And so, still a challenge. I'm, I'm trying to get the value news, maybe do a little piece on us, because they did a little blurb on the results of the town meeting, but nothing really in terms of like specifically talking about that. So, and, and phone, phone calls keep coming in on that. So we'll continue to work that as hard as we can. The other exciting one is that piece of land that Bob LaCroix owns, that we subdivided last year, or two years ago, I guess it was, 43 acres behind the dealership on Route Four, has frontage on Lovejoy as well. There's a lot of interest there. And I think, even though it's a big chunk of change, it's like $2 million sale price on that. I've taken more calls in the last month on that than I did on, in the previous two years. So so doing a couple of real, these aren't just tire kickers, these are, these are serious developers, you know, that I could go on and look at projects that they've done. One of them is from Vermont. And it's kind of neat because Town Manager, I don't know if you talk to you guys at Select Board, he's going down with the City Manager Lebanon and the Town Manager from Hanover. There's a project in Dover that he's going down to see. It's a, it's a tiny house village that was written up in the New Hampshire Business Review. And it's kind of, everybody's like, whoa, what's this? You know, so there's a little bit of a buzz going there. The guy that I talked to was interested in something like that for the Bob LaCroix land, which could be significant as well. I talked to a few developers and actually the broker who's representing Bob and selling the land called me today. And it was interesting because he didn't know about the new ADU updates and those zoning ordinance. And so I filled in on that. And he's kind of, you know, keeping an eye on things. And that one could break in the next year. So I don't know, think about, think about, if we had Laramie Farms and this one going, that would be, that would be huge. So, but again, daunting, to say the least. Guy that we did a site plan for out on Smith Pond Road a couple of years back, Mr. Niddell, really nice guy. He built a shop, wood shop down there. He's been in touch. He's contemplating some expansion down there to probably require further site plan. He has been very successful with a very high-end cabinetry, kitchen cabinetry for bathrooms and kitchens. And he's also, I don't know if you guys know that, he's a son-in-law, Buddy Tean's the Durham football coach. And so I expressed our sympathy there. He's, it's really in a bad way, I guess. He's not, not well.
Yeah, I heard that was bad.
Bad accident. I talked to the guy that owns the old Raphael's site on Route Four. He's back to talk to us, most likely becoming in for site plan. He wants to be a modular and mobile home dealer, which is, I think, what we talked to him about years ago.
Yep.
So he might have a couple of models on his site there. And literally, they're up on blocks. And the office for his business is in one of the units. And so they can bring in a new unit, set it up on the blocks, put the power to it. And he can run his office. That, I think that's what he proposed. And after two years, they gotta move them out and move something else in. But, you know, I've been encouraging him, as you guys know, that's upstate, that's possible for mixed use, so there's other possibilities he could do there. So talking to him, he's just coming back from Florida. He's spent some winters in Florida now, so he's.
The footprints, best by knowledge is that they're gone by his grandfather.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay. That was my understanding, but.
Yep.
Is, is he still talking about creating a modular home village?
Well, so that's, that's something that's sort of deeper in the back of his mind about what could be done with that property. As you guys all know, that the limitations on that site are largely a result of the flood, flood buoy in the FEMA map. I think he, he probably could do what he's talking about doing, because those things would be up on blocks. So they are sort of floodproof. I mean, you put them two, three feet up above, they're very unlikely to flood. And so we're gonna work with FEMA and the State Office of Planning and Development on that to see what, and what he can, can't do there. But obviously, that's a part of what we, what we do with him. Eric already mentioned a little bit about the Masco Lakeside Park project. The thing I would just add to what he said is that we're, we're, we are getting engineering done on that. My advice to them and to Town Manager is, is we sort of piecemeal things. To this point, we got a, we got a shoreline permit for the pavilion. And then later, we did a shoreline permit for the placement of the retaining wall. And I said, well, okay, let's do one more shoreline permit for everything that we want to do down there. Because the parking is one component. They're talking about some nature trails, an outdoor classroom, some rain gardens, you know, just neat stuff like eco-training for the kids. And they want it to be sort of an example of what you should do on the waterfront with native species and plants and so forth. So that's exciting. And then the only other thing I would add to what Eric said is we had put a plan out there and we've now got state of New Hampshire buy-in from the DOT for some parking along Main Street in that vicinity. Would actually be parallel parking between the rail trail and Main Street. We think we can get 12 to 15 spaces to sort of supplement. As you guys know, that, that spot can get very busy certain times of year, whether it's the skating in the winter or whether it's summer fun. And we just, the only obstacle we have now is the rail trail itself, the DOT and the Friends of the Rail Trail. And we think they'll come on board because it really does give more access to the rail trail. And it's really not a large intrusion. It's just basically fattening out the road a little bit more there. And then we've got to rebuild that sidewalk that's kind of crumbled as you guys have been down there.
Why parallel versus diagonal?
Space. So if we make it a pair, an angle park or straight in parking, you're gonna really seriously intrude into
towards the rail trail.
Into the rail trail right away. And they really don't want to.
And then backing out, you get that curve, you know, and you'd lose your sidewalk there.
Right. Yeah, we want to keep that thought, cause that's sort of interconnectivity to the village and so forth. So it's exciting. We were down there just the other day doing some measurements. And like I said, the, the big hurdle, the DOT is, seems to be like, you guys want to do that, send us, get with us. And as I said, I think that rail trail people are gonna be like, hey, it's more access for people to use our rail trail. And it's not really gonna be too much of an intrusion into what they, what they have. So that's exciting. Shed Street, working with Ed Town Manager. We have an appointment. The contractor that's been doing Brownfields work with us through the Brownfields program is now gonna be working directly for us. The RPC, which applies for a big grant from Brownfields through the EPA, they did not get the grant for this time around, so they don't have any money to spend. But we have used money from that to do a Level One and a Level Two site assessment. So we know sort of what needs to be done. And we did get some approvals through town meeting to do some more of that work. And I think sort of next up, we've got to basically decide we're gonna take those buildings down. They need some lead and asbestos remediation before we do that. There's some site monitoring wells and that kind of stuff. And then there was floor drain system, which is sort of a wild card still at this point. And we'll hopefully get going on that. The contractor's coming to meet us in the next week and we'll come up with more plans for that. Nicole Sype is back. Talk about the Commercial Equestrian site. She's working on the site plan application with you guys. Her plans have really been backed down. She's not planning anywhere near what she was originally, mostly due to the costs, cost her insane. So she's right sizing that as we speak. And she'll be in probably in the next month or two for site plan review with you guys. Conkey, I went down to see his gravel pit. It's an annual inspection for his existing pit. We did talk about his other one. He's, he's in contemplation as to what he'll do with the, with the one that he was proposing to permit with you guys. At this point, I think it's a long ways off because he's sort of put a weight on the back burner. As you know, he can remove the material that's already been excavated down there, the stockpiles, without any permit at all, because it's already been taxed and it's already been, it was, it was done on the previous permit. So he's probably gonna take that material and move it to his other site. He's, I don't know if he's joking or half-serious, he's talked about doing some farming down on that site. I think it's mostly because he's mad, mad at the Eastman people for their objections to what he wanted to do.
Big problem?
So he's, he's, that's a teeny good, that's a teeny good move. He wants to put some pigs down there, which would be a nasty. I will say, my personal opinion is that it's too bad that they, the two parties, in this case, Eastman and Conkey couldn't have come to some agreement because Eastman really needed to work with him for, they wanted to explore a new well. They needed a spot for a new well. And they've got him now, that he, he's not gonna work with them at all. He's mad at them. And then he's also, they, they sort of shot themselves in the foot in that he will not supply any of them with, with gravel or sand or anything for their sites. So their, their costs for doing work on that whole development have gone up substantially. I don't know. They probably don't even realize it, but that is absolutely true. Couple more, just finishing up real quick. Whaleback, we were contacted by Whaleback. They're gonna be applying for a Northern Borders Grant to try to improve their snowmaking. And as you guys know, it's a nonprofit. We, we give them a huge tax break from the town. But they're doing good work over there. They had, they actually had a really good year this year. This, I think, was probably one of their best years, believe it or not. Their problem now, and you probably are well aware of this, is that winter, even now, it's the, the, we don't get the cold that we used to. So their snowmaking is becoming more difficult. So what they need to do is increase their volume of snowmaking. So when we do have the cold, they can take advantage to the tune of much more snow. Unlike the old days where it was cold, we didn't get a lot of snow, but it was cold, so they could blow snow for weeks and weeks and weeks. Now they can blow snow a couple of days a week. And so they're really hoping to try to increase their output. And they've applied for it. And we've come on board as a, basically, we did a letter of support. We helped them identify other organizations and businesses to go after for more letters of support. I actually wrote him a sample letter of support. And so we're trying to work hand in glove with them on that. And we'll see where that leads us. I really like those guys. I mean, we know them really well now. They're Executive Director and Ed and I have had meetings before. And so, I mean, it's neat. They're teaching kids how to ski. So cool stuff. And I mentioned earlier about Liam, the Building Inspector is now sort of in my department. So we just wrapped up employee evaluations. And I gave Liam a really great evaluation. He's doing great work. He works his tail off. I know that it's, his job's very much a thankless job. And if half the people are happy with him and half the people are mad, he's doing his job. I think about as good as you can expect. He is one of those guys that if you make the call early on and come see him before you start work, it works really smooth. If you just push ahead and start building, it's gonna be trouble. And we've had to take some action against a few people. Number one is the former daycare on High Street. They started converting that to multifamily. And right now is one apartment and a daycare approval. And I think it was Phil that actually found it. There was a fire call there. And alarm activation or something. And he went in and he's like, what's going on here? Oh, we're converting this over to apartments again. Yeah, you, you don't have the approval there. You probably need to talk to Land Use Administrator. And let's see your building permits. And of course, no building permits and no licensed electricians or licenses in other states, not in New Hampshire. So Liam and I, we actually have a meeting on Friday with that business, with that owner. And I, we're gonna put his feet to the fire. It's, you know, kind of a big no-no to just start working without any permits. So that is pretty much the highlight of what I'm about to, but definitely getting busy.
Thanks for getting us caught up on what's going on in town.
And as you have to, didn't guess at anybody, tell them to call us.
Okay. Next, we have the minutes from our previous meeting, which was March 22nd.
Does anybody have copies of that I got?
I have, I have two. I'll start it off. Dan, were you here or were you on Teams?
I was here.
I thought so.
Don't know if it was.
Line seven, line seven. And my other highlighted comment.
What about in seven?
Excuse me?
What about line seven?
Line seven says that Dan was on virtually and he was not. He was sitting right here next to me.
Oh, I was, okay. Right.
You were, you were on the screen, but Dan was in person. And on line.
Screen too.
Line 175. Line one seventy-five, uh, Phil Ramier is reported to have said that WMUR reported rates in New Hampshire had gone up. And knowing Phil, I'm assuming it's electric rates, but I wasn't quite sure.
Central rental rates.
Okay, could you make that change so that we know what, uh?
You could guess something with Phil. Electricity may not more than that.
So thanks for clar- clarifying and. Linda, you have some.
I have one, line two fifty-seven. I couldn't make it read correctly. Chairman Frack asked members to continue to think of items that amended. And bring, did, did you mean like maybe to be amended? Yes, I think so.
I think that is what I meant, thank you, Linda. Anyone else? Was that all that you had?
Yes.
Any, anyone else have anything on the minutes? I make a motion, we accept them as corrected. Motion made by Dan.
Second.
Seconded by Brad. Um, Kurt, I'm going to ask you to be a voting member.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Abstain.
I'll abstain.
Okay. Uh, let's see, tonight we have no hearings, no conceptuals. And we have Phil Leely, come on up Phil and grab a chair. And. I trust that Rob has filled you in as to why we invited you to this.
Sort of.
Okay.
Sort of.
Well, um. We, and uh, it's too bad that Tim is not here today because he's the one that was really focused in on building heights. But I, I think in general. As we go forward and rewrite our zoning regs, which will be happening, we hope, over the next. Year and a half, two years, not sure. There, there's been a lot of discussion, a lot of, um. Perhaps misunderstanding of what is meant in the current regs. Uh, we talk about a thirty-five foot height. And where is that measured from? Where is that measured to? Why thirty-five feet?
Well, I think, I think historically from, from my experience and as everybody may realize, may not. Spent eighteen years with the town as the building and fire inspector, so we. Have a little bit more background than just, you know, coming in two years as the fire chief, but. I think the thirty-five feet was originally established because that's what the town had for a ladder. It's a three-fly thirty-five foot extension ladder. We don't have it on the trucks anymore. Just for the simple reason, we do not have enough manpower. To operate a thirty-five foot ladder, it takes four people to move that ladder, it takes. Four to six people to get it up in the air, it's very unruly. I mean, in cases, what, just to give you a little bit of background, Fire Department has what's called run cards, so. Main Street, for instance, where some of the taller buildings are. Our run cards say we have Enfield, we have Canaan, we have Lebanon Ladder, we have Hanover Tower, those are all automatic, we don't have to ask for anything. And that's just an example and there's different locations where different run cards are in play. So. Lebanon, Lebanon's ladder is at a full, full man station, twenty-four seven. That ladder is typically going to be out of the station in. You know, that three to five minute range because they are there twenty-four seven. It's on the road, travel time from Lebanon. Another ten to twelve minutes, depending upon conditions. We're at a station where when I'm manned, everybody comes from the house, comes to get the equipment, so my point is the time difference. Is not huge from us using them as mutual aid. With, with the ladder. Their ladder is much safer than that thirty-five foot extension ladder. So what we have for, what we have on our equipment right now is we have a twenty-eight foot ladder and we have a twenty-four foot ladder. Typical, typical wall story height. I'm going to call ten feet, so if you're looking at a, you know, a two-story building, you're looking at probably twenty to twenty-two feet to the. To the eaves. Either one of those ladders are going to get you to, to that point. And we could talk about all different types of firefighting all night long and everyone is different, so nothing, nothing stays the same, I guess it's. Is part of the problem too and, and if I, you know, start not to make sense. Slow me down and, and ask questions, please, but I mean, from, from the. We, we've always looked at it, an accessible side is going to be from the side that you drive into. So lakefront properties, for instance, where you have a bank, you come off from four A. A lot of those houses are only one story or one and a half at the edge. So if you're going to go on to the roof from there, you're, you're short, you're close. But if you're going to go walk it all the way around and come off the front by the lake, you're talking a different, a different story, but. There's, there's no fire that's the same, so you can't say that you're going to. Access from this point. I think it's important to establish. Where your height is going to be measured from, so that there's a, a standard. But I think it should work from, from an accessible side and not just. Nothing, nothing on the building can be more than whatever number you come up with, I think it, it should work from the accessible side. You know, Rob talking about these new projects with these multifamily buildings, um, have been involved in those discussions. Those do not scare me whatsoever, we're talking sprinkled, we're talking fully detected, we're talking new construction. We're talking firewalls. So those buildings to me are safe buildings. In comparison to some of what we have on Main Street that are the older buildings, some that are balloon constructions, some that have been added, cut up. But again, some of my point is, we, we don't have a lot of fires, we, we are a very, I think a very safe town. I think we do a good prevention program, I think that we. With the building department, with the planning, with the zoning have got a good. A good number of. And those are all part of the prevention program, so that it's not just a. Um, haphazard building, when buildings are done, there's firewalls that are put in, there's, you know, fire stops that are put in, everything is smoke detected, every. You know, anything that's needed to be sprinkled is sprinkled. So again. The, the bigger projects. Don't, don't scare me at all, as far as from the, from the standpoint of. The firefighting. The numbers of calls, which is a whole different, whole different subject and a different, you know, for a different time, that, that's where my concern is more. I did reach out to Lebanon Fire and talk to Jim Leely, who was the new chief. Um, he'd been chief for about two weeks when I talked to him, he, he's been in maybe six months now, they had a change. Um, but I've known Jim for a long time and I said, so if we had, let's say a project of the three hundred, we had a project of, you know, a couple hundred. Rob and I, you know, we talked back and forth and that's nothing. We can, we can continue to, to supply you mutual aid. From, from those kinds of numbers for, for a fairly good period of time. I think he said that they were looking at something like twenty-seven to twenty-nine hundred units. That they're actively having their process now, so, I mean. This is, it's big for Enfield, but in, in the big scheme of things, it's not, it's not huge. So that doesn't really answer your question as far as how high buildings should be, but, um, I, I don't know.
You, you have answered the question of where to measure from.
Yeah.
And that's, that's been a big unknown.
I would think that is the most consistent spot to go from would be. From where your driveway access is or, um, where a fire truck is going to come in and set up or. I mean, I don't know how, how, how you could utilize. You know, the lay of the land to, to make it, to make it work.
Yeah.
Would, would the, okay, so we've established that the. Measurement should be taken from the most accessible side. How high up do you need to get? To the windows on the highest story, to the eaves?
To the roof?
To the roof.
Well, I mean. To me, if you all get to the eaves, you get to the roof. Is my understanding.
Right, that, but the other, I mean. And again, i- 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 and I gotta keep going back to every, everyone is different, so if we're talking about a chimney fire. Yes, we need to go to the roof, we need to get up to the ridge of the roof. So we would start out with a ladder to the eaves and then we have a ladder that has. Hooks on the top that we'd put up over the ridge and then we would go up. But the thing that we're running into more and more is that distance. From the eaves to the ridge, because as a building gets wider, that's going to. Increase your, increase your distance. Um, the longest ladder that they make is sixteen feet. How, you know, that's, that's where, again. Lebanon's ladder, Hanover's tower, you know, is gonna, is gonna come, it's, it's just going to be automatic. Like, that's our, that's our training, our, our, you know, uh. Size up when we get there, we don't know every house in town. Um, but as soon as somebody's there and they look at it and they say, oh, holy cow. We're not going to get a ladder from the ri- you know, from the ridge down, I'll be able to. Send Lebanon along. And then we just have to make planning on our part to be able to get that, get that vehicle in.
That, that house that just burnt on Route Four, that's a pretty tall house.
Yep.
Did Lebanon come with their ladder truck for that?
Yep, that was an automatic, Lebanon, Lebanon's ladder was up, Hanover Tower was up.
Okay.
Yep.
Couple of notes I was making as we were talking, so we're only going to be really just. Using this for new construction. Because everything else is grandfathered. So, everything that's there is just, it's a, it's just what it is.
It's a given.
Yeah, um, so with new construction, multifamily, the ground up. Does that, do firewalls become mandatory or is that still an option?
Well, it's depending upon the type of construction that they're doing and what the units are going to be. Um, there's going to, I mean, and I'm. And again, there's variables so that if they choose to sprinkle or they don't have to do as higher rated firewall. Depending upon what they need for separation. I mean. The sprinklers in my mind are the cheapest. Answer for, when you're getting into multifamily.
But what's required, see, what's, what to me is what's required on the building's point of view.
Well, it depends upon the number of units.
Okay.
Number of units depends upon the construction. Um, I think most. Large projects you would see sprinklers and I'm going to say that, I think you would see sprinklers. For themselves from an insurance standpoint. And that that would be, you know, from, from.
A major discount. In insurance, because it's a sprinkled building.
Multifamily, they might want to go to three stories or higher and then, you know, it's sort of like, well. Measurements don't fit our height measurements. So then you have to, but if there's something else that kicks in automatically, then it's, we don't have to worry about it.
Well, and again, I think each case would need to be looked at because there's variables that would, you know, where. If you do this, you don't need this, and if you do this, you don't need that.
Yeah.
What I'm hearing. Just throwing that for sake of discussion. Is, you know. Height, you could have your height limitation. But then make it a special exception. That's possible to go exceed the height limitation. With satisfaction of fire chief.
I think the height, I think, I think the height restriction. In most cases probably pertains to residential more than.
Yeah.
Commercial, because your commercial is going to be more restrictive in what the requirements are going to be than what single family homes.
Right, I mean, that was my other note, I mean, most of it, we're going to be seeing is single family homes. Being built from the ground up, like the camps being converted to torn down in a, in a full season house being constructed. Um, I mean, that's my guess is what's going to be the, most of the issues.
But I mean, you're typically, if you were looking at. It'd almost be all three stories and still be under that thirty-five as it is right now. If it's, if you're looking at ridge to ground. So.
Yeah. Okay, and then as far as where do you measure from, I wrote down basically the, um, just forwarding for sake. Uh, the side with main, with the main access door. So, because, I mean, my house has. The side where the driveway is in the garage, the door there, then there's a door on the other opposite side of the house, and I have a walkout. Which is a walkout basement, so even though the ground wasn't slopy, that wasn't a lot of slope.
I think it still should be from where, or, or, I guess, from, from. How, how you would access, how the fire.
Fire truck. I'm just thinking in terms of, right, yeah. Okay.
The logical fire truck.
Yeah, yeah.
Because the fire truck, I mean, like, and I'm thinking like on your house, if I'm remembering it right, fire truck isn't going to drive around to your porch front. It's going to be right at your garage.
Yeah, right, yeah.
So I think that as a standard might be the.
Right, I mean, it's, everybody's going to be coming down because there's no one to be parking to speak of. You know, you're going to be going down some kind of driveway.
Yeah.
To access any single family home. And then we were, that kind of goes is where you. That's where you're going to be measuring from to the ridge line.
To the eve.
I think, I think to the eve.
To the eve.
To the eve.
Okay.
Another thing that, uh, Phil and I discussed when we had a meeting with the Larry V Farms developers was. Is there a site plan, having you guys work with them to have basically staging areas built into the site.
Right.
Where the, where the ladder truck can set up, I mean, the ladder truck when it comes, it has big outriggers that you go down and touch. I know there's a place in Clermont, that's one of those big mills that got converted over to residential. And they had these green spaces, it, people are like, oh, we can turn that into a park, and it's like, no, no, no. That's where the ladder sets up right there.
Right.
So they just mow them as lawns, but they're solid underneath so the ladder truck can pull off. And the developers, when we talked to them, they're like, oh, okay. At first when we said.
Well, they thought we would talk to helicopters. I was saying, land these zones for a ladder and they got a little nervous, but anyway.
We're going to be coming in there and landing.
But I mean, the other, the other parts of, the other parts of, you know. Thinking about this, this multifamily is the, I think the access, um, is very important. Don't think you want to make it so that you can't get people out in the event of a large. A large event in there, even if we're not in the same building, people still need to be able to, to get out. You know, their water supply, their, you know, the location of hydrants. Um, tho- those are, those are the important pieces in my mind.
Now, would you see them having to have a cistern?
Depending upon what the water system is, Dan. I mean, that, if they're going to be above the water, if they're going to be above the water tower and not be able to u- utilize that, then yes. I would think that they would have to have a cistern and a fire pump that would be.
In order, in order to get the sprinklers, enough water to the sprinklers.
Yeah, so that they would be, yeah. And if they end up with a fire pump code calls for a generator system anyway, so there's a backup to it, so again, there's. A lot of, a lot of. Backups too.
And then the other one, Phil, is recommendation of space between buildings.
I think you're going to want to look, we want to look at the fire code and the building code to see, to see what. Is required, because I think depending upon numbers of. Is required because I think depending upon numbers of units and height may and construction. Uh, all of those factors I think are gonna come into.
Cause I'm meeting that in all cases, not just in this case. You know, where people are taking these little camps and enlarging them and all of a sudden. You've got two that are eight, ten feet apart. Because they got a variance to.
Well, um. Building code wise, and I'm going from memory and I haven't been into it for two years here, but. Single family, I think you're you're gonna be allowed to be fairly close. And it's.
So we're just looking at getting enough space you can get a ladder in there.
I I don't think you can plan that, Dan, for the simple reason if. This house and this house, and let's say there's twelve feet apart. You can't just drive a ladder in there.
No, no, I'm talking a regular ladder.
Oh, yeah. I mean, yeah, sure, to be able to keep a, to put a ground.
That would come into just the setback requirements for these small.
These small lots.
Those are still, those are still zone for, well, you've got a, if you've got a pre-existing footprint. But if it's, if they're changing the footprint, that's still the least being a fifteen foot set.
Well, that's what I'm saying is they could be looking to get a variance, part of the variance would have to be the space in between buildings.
I think, I I guess, I I know through the years, there hasn't been a lot of discussion with the fire department. I think more discussion with the fire department on individual projects. Be very up for that and and I think a lot of them need to be looked at on an individual basis. Because I don't think you can stamp it as. Right across the board.
Yeah, but if they, I mean, you can talk to um. Um, if there is a minimum amount that the building code says for standard, single family homes. That we can make that as a setback requirement for all these quadruple, pre-existing quadruple lots. Um, and say, and if you go below that, you're gonna record the ZBA. And this is why the ZBA should look seriously at approving it. Because it's a fire issue. But then. And that's, that's the bare minimum. As zoning goes, just use that as the bare minimum for zoning. And then um. Excuse me, but then, I just wanna write down for the record, so you still wanna be okay with staying with the thirty-five foot? Height limit for ground to the eve? And you just measure it from the fire truck access point.
Accessible point.
Accessible. Other thing that was writing down, I was hoping you might give some input on. Um, well, it's more for the select board, actually, on the classics roads, there is an ordinance, needs to be updated. Um, it's pretty old, it's pretty loose. Your, you know, fire chief's opinion on structures on classics roads and I know. Um, I know they have to put a deed, a deed restriction or a, something in the deed. Stating that no guarantees fire or ambulance is gonna show up. Or get down your driveway, down this road, yeah, get in there. So you're on your own.
Well, I got, I I, again, I'm gonna. I don't know that the town should get into that point of deed work.
It's a state law.
I think people should be informed that they should talk to their insurance companies. Because their insurance company is gonna come in and say, no, we're not gonna insure this property, no, we're not gonna insure the property. So, prior to people putting roads in and building, you know, and again, through the years have made suggestions of. You know, that they, that they look at that is what it's gonna cost or if if they're even gonna get coverage.
Uh, private roads, um. I mean, we have stuff now on on the books for design standards for private roads. And they seem to be adequate.
I I get, I I'm I'm not thinking of times that there's been issues um. Getting into a place. You know, private rows with a bridge, that might be something that's worth looking at to.
Could be more than just a vehicle. Passenger vehicle, yeah.
You're expecting, because there are times that, I can think of a couple in town where it's been. Headed off a bridge and then carry the hose. Which isn't all that much fun. I would think that that could be an important thing to 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 look at maybe.
Okay, um, and then what about just general?
That's another one of those insurance issues too.
Sure, sure. But what's the cost, you know, if somebody's building a bridge for a car, how much more does it cost to build it for?
Could build it for a truck.
And is that something that we should really get into in our zoning? I mean, we're not, I I don't like to promote the nanny state. I think people need to.
Yeah, but if it's a primary road to multiple, multiple units, cause it's gonna be a road. Yeah, but I don't know if regs cover bridges. I don't think anyone mentioned bridges. That's why I'm. Shared driveway is only two homes. Once you get to three, you've got a private road, the road bed has to be. But I don't know what bridges, cause I haven't looked at it for a while, are even mentioned. So, so yeah, so that's something that.
That's something we need to look at. That would be probably in site plan regs, I think. Or or subdivision, or both.
Minimum, um, okay, so, and then just general driveways, any. Do you have any preference on width of driveways access?
Ones that don't scratch the side of the truck.
Then you're talking about, you know, you're talking about maintenance to match.
Right, that's the problem.
And again, I'm thinking of, you know, thinking of spots, but. Typically not, not an issue.
So I I've got a question, i- if you're done, Kurt? Does the fire department have any opinion on? Steeples and cupola's and roof type structures which might even include solar. Um, in terms of height and access in the case of a fire.
Guess without a little more research, I'd not, I I'd not venture an opinion on on steeples or cupolas. I think there's already some work being done on solar as far as having to have travel paths and. Um, access to the edge, I think, you know, that's been being worked on for a period of time.
Do that in the building regs?
I think it's working in that direction, so. Because what's happening quite often, I mean, Enfield is always required if it's an existing building. Something of an engineering study to s- see that the roof is capable of holding, holding the added load. Solar is not a huge added load because it's covering, covering a large area. The more problematic that's been is not having a way to get up and around that solar if that's. Your front access. And, you know, again, we're talking about.
That sixteen foot ladder with the hook on it, if the solar is up three or four inches, the hook's not gonna work.
And we're not putting it onto the.
And we're not putting it on the solar.
We're gonna go to another.
We gotta go to another side.
Because that solar remain active. All the time.
All the time.
And, but I I think, I think there is, I think there's. I won't say legislation, but I think the building officials are in the process and maybe the fire marshal's office. Of working on having an.
A pathway.
A pathway to be able to at least access through the solar. Yeah, I mean, cupolas, I I just, again, I'm not seeing the problem and. Existing steeples throughout town was, you know, churches and. By a fighter's standpoint, a steeple or, you know, on a church, you just, you get out of the way because it's gonna come down.
It's gonna come down.
Pretty much. So, no matter what.
Anybody else have any questions for Phil? Thanks for coming in.
Happy to, thank you.
I've learned a lot, I've heard everybody else has.
But I, again, I would, you know, I'll offer out the times that there are questions or particular projects or whatever. I'd like to have it, I'd I'd rather have this face-to-face discussion than being handed a set of plans. You know, Rob gives us the plan, but I'd still like to have.
And there's, there's gonna be folks, you know, with this new ADU. There's gonna be folks wanna convert these old barns into into living quarters. And you're gonna have to be able to figure out a way to firewall. Those living quarters from from different living quarters. Um, cause those suckers will burn quick.
Who's gonna be, uh, who's in charge of the house that burned down, taking it down? Is it gonna be fire department or Liam?
No, no.
It's gonna be Liam's?
Well, no, it's gonna be the owner that's gonna take that.
Well, I know, but making sure.
He's already, he's already been informed.
That it has to come down.
Has to come down, that it is a hazard. A period of time is being given for him to deal with his.
Insurance company.
With his, you know.
Two fires to do that.
And, but that's probably not a good discussion. But anyways.
Doing some permanent renewal?
Yes, so, yeah, no, he's, the fire department's involved with with that process and he he's aware of the. Aware of his responsibility.
Alright, thanks again.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thanks, Phil.
Okay. Next, we have old business. And I'm gonna mix up the order a little bit. Because the zoning ordinance rewrite and the grant application for zoning ordinance consultant. For the rewrite kind of go together. So, um, let's, let's do the mapping project first and. Rob, do you have any updates?
Yes, I have. Yes, I have contacted two, actually, three local companies. Number one, I reached out to Bill Avery of what was Ace Blueprint, it's now called Copy World. He's in the Colonial Plaza in West Lab. The size that we were looking for, it's a little bit bigger than he can handle. He can do that size right there. Which is, that's three, thirty-six by probably. So he actually got me in touch, his son works for R.C. Brayshaw. And R.C. Brayshaw does have a sixty-inch prayer. And so I've gotten a price and quote from them. Uh, laminated five foot on, um. Thick paper, basically, it's laminated, so you can do dry erase on it if you want to. It's like three hundred and seventy bucks from those guys. Um, and then also reached out to a place down in Clermont, Dulittle's. They can do slightly smaller than five feet. In the one seventy-nine, we planted. If we wanna go to the five foot, it does push it up over three hundred something dollars for those guys.
We're gonna do quadrants too. It doesn't have to be all one piece of eight. As long as they match.
Yeah, is that a self adhesive?
No, okay. I would have to mount it somehow I can figure out a way to get it mounted, but.
Did you ask about, um, looking at normal copy? Cause I was down there a month or so ago doing some projects and. The Hanover store, there's just a Hanover store now. They closed eleven-on-one. Um, and I was just waiting for my project, looking at what they, and in their back room, it was just open viewing. They had a massive printer. I mean, it was huge.
I haven't talked to.
I I don't know what the size was, but it was, it was like, wow, that thing's big.
They might have a six, you think they might have a sixteen inch? So, I mean. We, we had a guy here that could do it for us at a reasonable price, but we. I mean, you can see where he was coming from, the town manager said, let's look, look at some other options, cause we don't wanna just be seen as. Throwing the business to an inside guy. So.
Are you still working?
I'm sort of semi-retired.
Still have the equipments?
Uh, at this point, I I tell people who ask that I am a a print broker. And I do have sources, or in this case, A Source. That would do, uh, it would be in two pieces, it would be dry erase. And it would be self adhesive. And. I think the number that I gave to Ed and Rob. Is it lower than any of the? Lower?
Low three hundreds?
I thought it was mid-two hundreds. But I don't, I don't remember. But there, you know, there's, there's paper on it, so. We'll, we'll go whatever way the town manager wants to go. You know, you've done your due diligence, as it were, and, uh.
Well, now we have three bids, basically.
You had, you had, you have four.
That's right, we got a no bid from.
Let's see what he wants to do.
My opinion is bigger is better.
Absolutely.
And we, David and I, when we originally planned this out, we were gonna use that space for a big, basically from the table to the ceiling. Or we could put it there too.
Right, same, same height, I thi- I think we're looking at five feet high, didn't we say that?
Yeah, it was about five feet from the table to the ceiling there.
So the, the map would. The town would be rotated, so it's, um.
Less weight.
Parallel to the edge. Which would allow it to be larger. And, um, it would take up pretty close to the full five feet as, as we've. Figured it out.
And David and I, I I don't know if you told them when I was out in Utah, we did, we have a projector in the office. And we did set it up and throw it up on that whiteboard and you can take the dry erase. With a stationary projector and play around, it's kinda cool.
But you just can't keep it.
You can't keep.
Yeah, yeah, that's the thing.
That's, that's the problem.
Don't wanna be coming back to my plate and go, what did we do?
Yeah, okay, so that's the deal on the mapping project. And I would assume that within the next week, we'd be able to figure out what's going on.
Get something going.
And hopefully have it up here by our next meeting. So for the, uh. Zoning rewrite project and grant application for same. I did a sample grant application. And I think I did that probably the end of last month. Uh, Rob and I took a look at it and I think Rob was generally happy with it. We agreed to send it off to Ed. I sent it to Ed, have had no response. I sent it off to the New Hampshire housing people who said. We will look at a draft and make comments. And let me get to their email, which. They just sent it this afternoon. And I can find it. Okay, so they provided four areas of concern or suggestions. Um, one is the timeline, which I had proposed. And they reminded me that the timeline, uh, at least as far as, um, submitting invoices, the last date that we can submit an invoice is July twenty twenty-four. So after that date, no more invoices will be accepted. But work may continue, but reimbursement will cease. So I think we need to have a discussion with Ed and with, um, our proposed contractor as to how we can make this thing work. Uh, second comment, the committee is pleased to see the community engagement plan. It's strong. And they felt that the Housing Academy, which is a training thing that they offer, uh, and I think they offer it for up to three people, will also be a helpful resource. Uh, they did feel that involving other boards and constituents would be important for a successful project, i.e. Conservation Commission, et cetera. Um, and thinking about that particular comment, uh, we are going to be doing five more chapters, not many would, on the master plan, which includes the Conservation Commission amongst others. So I think if we know going into both projects that there'll be overlap, I think we can kill two birds with one stone. Uh, comment three is a full zoning rewrite is a significant undertaking. It was recommended that the proposal be focused on housing-related districts, especially considering the timeline you will be working with. And that's, I think, a discussion that we wanna have with Brandy to figure out from her perspective whether, how much she can fit in. Um, under the original plan or original proposal, we were gonna rewrite zoning, we were gonna rewrite subdivision regs, we were gonna rewrite site plan. And maybe we don't do all three. Maybe we do zoning and site plan or zoning and subdivision. Um, I don't know.
Or just zoning.
Yeah. And fourth comment, uh, I knew nothing about, and hopefully Dan and Kurt might be able to fill me in on this. Uh, the committee had a question in regard to the CPG grant received in twenty thirteen and whether it was being discontinued with this rewrite or incorporated. So for Dan or Kurt?
What, what's the actual title? What's the, what's the full title?
Uh, this is all I have, CPG.
I mean, the initials sound familiar.
I know they do.
Like I've heard them before.
But I don't think it came through us. I wanna say, wasn't there a project where you guys did the Route Four zone?
Oh, the Route Four zone. That would've been till twenty thirteen.
Would it, would that have been?
That was the form-based zone.
It was the form-based zoning before.
So basically, we were.
No, we're not, we're not getting rid of it.
We would, I, I mean, you know, in, in tentative discussions, we may even expand it.
Right. But that's, yeah, exactly.
Okay.
And that's probably the one that would need the least rewrite.
Right.
Cause the, the, this.
Yeah, it's most recent.
It's the most recent one.
Yeah.
And it was a full.
Yeah.
A full zone.
Yeah, yeah.
Right. Okay, yeah, we're just, yeah, that was a CPG grant, come to think of it, yeah.
Okay, so I will respond to her that.
We're not.
We are going to include it and.
Incorporate it.
And, and quite possibly expand it.
Right, yes.
Okay, um, so that's kinda where we are on the zoning ordinance rewrite. Uh, Rob, what I would like to do.
And you can go one step further.
What's that?
We're using the same, we, we're proposing to use the same contractor that we used on the.
Yeah.
For form.
Okay, I will mention that.
And master plan.
And master plan.
Yeah.
I, I will mention both those.
Yeah.
Good ideas. Um, what I propose doing, Rob, is reaching out to Brandy by email, sending her the, uh, grant proposal that I wrote. And sending her the comments from the initial review by the steering committee. And saying, could we have a meeting to discuss and see how we're gonna make this thing work? And probably would be Brandy, me, you, and Ed. And ask Brandy for some dates and times, and we'll see where we go.
Sounds good.
Uh, since I have no idea how fast she's going to respond. And we may, as we, um, as we did with the master plan grant that we were proposing to write for them. Um, we wanted to keep the option open of having this be a planning board originated grant or a town administration originated grant. So for the purpose of a planning board grant, um, if that's the way we decide to go on it, and, you know, I think they'll take the advice of our town manager, but ultimately, um, if it goes this way, we need a copy of the minutes in which a resolution by the planning board approved the grant. So I am going to make a motion that the Enfield Planning Board approve the submission of a grant proposal to the New Hampshire Housing Opportunity Program, not to exceed seventy-four thousand dollars. Somebody wanna second that? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, the motion passes, and we will have that in the minutes. And by the time I submit the revision, whatever it is, uh, we will have the minutes to tack on to it.
Can I get a point of order?
Sir.
We may wanna have that, um, by person, cause there's somebody online.
A, a roll call vote?
Roll call vote.
I think that's very good. Okay. We will retake the vote as a roll call with, um, Kurt as an alternate being elevated. So we'll start with Eric. How do you vote?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
I vote aye.
Phil votes aye.
Brad.
Aye.
Kurt?
Kurt, Kurt votes aye.
And Linda?
I vote aye.
All right, the results have not changed, but now we have names. Okay. Uh, next thing under old business listed on the agenda is rules of procedure discussion.
More or less a placeholder.
And that, that's a placeholder and.
Next month.
I realize that. And I, I wanna kind of make a suggestion to build off of Tim's idea that we have old business or continuing business. And I thought about this, and when I looked at the printed agenda, my thought was, well, people from the public might expect that things on the agenda would be discussed. And they might decide to show up or not show up based on what's on the posted agenda. So I am proposing, and we can have discussion on it, that we have old business be things that we want to discuss. And then we have another category of upcoming business or future business. Does that sound like something that we would?
You could put placeholders there, under the.
You could put placeholders there.
Yeah.
I guess my only question would be if you say future, then you can't, you can't talk about it this meeting because it has to be a future.
Yeah, it's a good point.
Could you call it continuing?
Or may.
Continuing business. Continuing business doesn't have to be discussed.
Okay.
Okay.
So pending, continuing, which do you wanna use?
I don't care.
Yeah, um. I mean, I mean, you can just put a little clarification there, whatever you wanna call it, but a clarification of may or may not be discussed at the, uh, present meeting.
Correct.
Our current meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, cause we may have the discussion.
Yeah.
But with no guarantee.
Right.
So what's, what's, let's call it pending business or, or continuing?
I don't know what.
Yeah. Either way.
Brad, what should we call it?
I don't know.
My only comment would be that anything that is more than a passing discussion should be moved, should be moved into the new business.
Yeah.
Right.
So that people, cause otherwise if something's on the agenda for six months and then you talk about it, people haven't really had the opportunity to know that you're talking about it.
Yeah, I mean, like in, in this case, uh, we would have, uh, the rules of procedure discussion.
I think the intent is good. I'm just, it has to be, we have to be diligent about moving things into the appropriate categories.
Yeah.
People do know what is going to be discussed, that they haven't missed their chance to.
I agree.
Something.
I agree.
Yeah, I mean, we call future discussion, and then say like tonight, this rules of procedure. If you have a set date, like, okay, next meeting, we are going to discuss it, then it gets bumped to new business, new business.
Yeah.
Otherwise, it's just a, sort of like what we're doing now.
Ongoing.
Yeah, back and forth, and nothing's decided.
Mm-hmm.
Other than it will be discussed next meeting.
Mm-hmm. Okay, so a new category.
Thing on the paper.
All right, our next meeting is April twenty-sixth, two weeks from tonight. Brad will be out of the country.
Yeah.
Where do you hit it?
Oscar.
Yeah, us.
Stan.
Steve.
Ooh.
I hope you have snow.
They got hammered all week.
Did they?
Yeah.
Good.
What town?
Uh, it's a good question, uh, St. Anton's.
Okay.
Yeah. Starting on my neighbor, uh, on my road, he has a house in Mammoth, California. They've gotten so far this year fifty-eight feet.
Wow.
Fifty-eight, fifty-eight feet.
Oh, yeah.
That's a lot of snow.
Places I was skiing in Utah.
Yeah.
Right.
And it's broke all records, since, since they're the beginning, beginning of time that they've recorded, it's smacked.
Mm-hmm. So is there anything else anybody wants to discuss tonight?
I have a question, um. Uh, could someone tell me what house burned on Route Four?
The one that was right up along the road with the tieback on it?
Across from?
Anderson Hill.
Across from Anderson Hill, the house that was almost right to the road.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Tieback all around it.
Yeah, yeah.
And then the.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think that was.
Anything else?
To the ground, basically.
It's still standing, but it's.
When did it burn?
About two weeks ago. It's not, not salvageable, it looks like.
Yeah, it was abandoned for years. Technically.
But someone was living in the back.
Maybe.
I, I would see him going in and out.
Quickly.
All right, I, I think I heard Dan make a motion.
I did. Well, I, I just wanna mention before we adjourn. Um, I was looking at the lots along the lake, and I had some time, so basically going online, it was, took time, but it was easy to add up the acreage of those individual lots.
Mm-hmm.
And, hey, I'm sorry.
Is it Masko, my lake?
All the lakes, all the lakes.
Okay.
And the average on the lakes is about a quarter acre.
Yeah.
Uh, that was, and there are a fair amount of lots, especially on the smaller lakes, that are down to, um, less than a quarter acre. And with structures on them.
Yeah.
So I didn't differentiate between structure there and nonstructure. I was just looking at lot acreage on, from the tax codes.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so that's sort of the minimum of what's currently there. Um, apart from, is actually waterfronts property. So it was just something to think about when we're doing the tax maps and where to draw lines and.
Yeah, just some real, real small lots on spec.
Yeah, yeah. So.
So we had a motion on the floor. Nobody seconded it. Motion made by Dan, seconded by Brad, all in favor of adjourning this meeting.
Aye.
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 Close, abstentions. We are adjourned at, I'll call it seven fifty-six.
Bye, Linda.
Bye, Linda.
Bye.
When are you, when are you coming home?
By the end of the month.
Okay, I'm leaving then. I'm gonna be down there starting about the eighth of May, so.
Oh, yeah? You said you were going to Ormond. Why are you going there?
Because I want to.
That's a good reason.
We're going south. We're just headed south. That's the southern part of our trip.
Yes.
Are you guys meeting tomorrow?
Yeah.
Yes.
I gotta, I gotta go on a note for a week south.
It's really gonna be just.
I figure after.
During for two weeks.
Yeah, I'm upset again, because it was just sometime like seven weeks ago.
Yeah.
So we'll give an update on that.
Yeah.
So you said.
First one is gonna be Zoom.
Yeah, conservation, they have their most recent meeting.
That's a couple. And the select board.
A lot of, a lot of differing opinions, folks at the meetings, but.
Yeah, yeah.
A lot of very.
Yeah, yeah, also. Only because. Really.